Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
I am supposed to be the Select Board alternate, but I have really, for whatever reason, life happens and I just cannot ever make a meeting. So if somebody else wants to be the planning permission Select Board alternate, they would probably really appreciate that.
I guess I would be happy to go through those.
All right. The last ones have been on Tuesday at 7:00?
Only in March, but typically it's the second Monday at 6:30 on Zoom.
Second Monday? 6:30?
6:30 on Zoom.
Road Commissioner, statutorily Allison Bigwood is to be Road Commissioner until we hire a town manager. Town Health Officer Allison Bigwood.
I would call that interim health officer.
Yes, interim health officer, correct. And the tree warden, no, Town Service Officer. You said you would do that as well, correct?
I don't know what it does, but sure.
Yeah, what do you mean?
I remember, we had a discussion, I think it was the service officer.
We talked about the service officer or tree warden.
Service officer, sorry.
So that's Allison?
Yep. When the regional planning commissioners, we really need to have, we need to do that because we have to hand this in. This is your job description as a commissioner.
Is this different from planning commission?
Yes.
And it would just seem logical that planning, that they should come from within the planning commission? How has that not been the case?
We haven't had a representative of that for almost a year.
It is kind of logical, I think you're right. They should come from the planning.
I'm supposed to be not volunteering. But just seem logical.
I want to ask my brother.
I haven't.
Oh, yes, yes, he's not here.
Yeah. I'll ask him.
Okay, so next, we'll deal with that next meeting?
You should ask the planning commissioner to decide quickly.
Since Barry is here.
Yeah, there she is.
Do we have to decide right now?
No.
Yeah, we can wait next week. You can call your colleague through.
I mean, I'm happy to have Richard Beattie, but I think we should.
Yeah, you should figure out someone from your group.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. Anything, any other corrections? Any other corrections, additions, comments? Yes, Paul?
Is this appropriate or is this within the board?
Go ahead, no, feel free.
Back to the Road Commissioner, was there any other interest in the position?
There was, but statutorily it's supposed to be your town manager. So to make, to meet legal requirements, that's what we're going to do. And it's only till we have a town manager. And Allison will work with us.
That's the statute.
Yes, I don't have a copy of the statute in front of me to read it. Sorry.
So can I make a motion that we approve the changes to our appointment list as written?
Certainly.
I have a motion to approve the appointment list first draft as written. Any discussion? Wait till Paul. Give me a second.
Any question?
Yes, sir.
If we're approving this and we're going to make some changes, how does that work?
It's first draft.
First draft, okay.
First draft. Are you okay if we go ahead, Paul?
All right, go ahead.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. All right. Junkyard ordinance legal opinion. So I poked at Larry to, it's salvage yard, not a junkyard. So under current Vermont law, a salvage yard includes outdoor storage of four or more vehicles which have been unregistered for 90 days or more. The owner or operator requires a certificate of approved location from the Select Board and an operational certificate from the State Transportation Board. And the location and use must conform with local zoning regulations. West Minister's ordinance defines a junkyard to include outdoor storage of three or more vehicles unregistered for 30 days or more which are visible from a public highway. I did, so that is Larry's legal opinion of the salvage yard ordinance. So the property that's on Morse Brook Road does not meet that requirement. I did email Larry and asked a clarifying question because there are no vehicles associated with the property and he did not, he has not responded. So I'm going with putting up a fence. Is, they've agreed to put up a fence. As long as the rest of the Select Board is okay with that decision, then I would consider this matter closed.
So there are not vehicles there?
There are not.
So this doesn't necessarily apply?
Correct. It's not applied to them.
Okay, and so they, so they are voluntarily putting up a fence?
And this? Yes.
The neighbors that rallied at the last meeting for this resident already came in and asked for permits for the fence because they are mortal pool with that.
So actually what we could do is simply thank them for their putting up a fence, but we're not requiring them to because we don't have any, you know, legal action to take here. So they're, the property owner themselves are resolving this issue at least for the moment. And that, that's nice, so it's no longer our problem.
Correct.
Town.
Correct.
Unless there were vehicles there.
Or unless they just got the permits and all this, and never do it.
It won't.
Then what comes back to us?
It's a volunteer and to put a fence up, they're making good.
The fence is simply their own private action, I believe. It's not a mandated action, it's not to address any statutory requirement. So the best we can do is say thank you.
I agree. I'm just worried about if they don't put it up, then those people that are complaining come back to us and we'll have the idea of it.
More complaints are always.
We'll have to, we'll just have to plan on that when it comes.
Yep.
But it does seem, seem like it will be closed without any official action on our part.
Yeah. Yes. All right. Hazard mitigation plan survey, oh, we didn't need a motion for anything regarding that, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I was just noticing our appointments list and then just thinking back on the minutes of last meeting and the creation of another committee.
Oh.
Which I don't know whether, I think it would appear on the appointments list. And good thing it's just first draft. There's the capital plan.
That's not a committee.
It's not a committee?
No, we didn't make a committee.
Oh, good.
But there's the hiring, town manager.
There's town manager and hiring committee, and that is a committee? Or is that?
That was a, yeah, that's technically a committee.
And so that would be another, it just doesn't appear on this appointment list. The, the plan has to be assembled by some people or people.
Yes. So do you, are you suggesting we create a five-year capital plan committee? Or just add the town hiring committee and deal with the five-year capital plan?
Honestly, it would be a town manager job for a permanent town manager to work on. So it may be something that is, is a very important job, it'd be nice to have done before next year's town meeting, but not to be forgotten.
Okay.
Because I do, I consider it an important job, but very much within the scope of hopefully a permanent town manager.
Okay. So we will create that committee when we have town manager?
Town manager can do it.
Okay.
We can approve it.
All right. We will add the town manager hiring committee to the appointment list. Do you need a motion for that? Please say no.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
It is, it is an appointment.
If I could offer?
Yes, Chip.
As a service, I can begin that process for you now in accumulating.
The capital planning.
Capital planning and just providing information.
Yeah, it's largely a matter of assembling the needs of various pieces of the town.
Even just listing it to start with and getting it in front of you more than what you've had.
Sure.
Moving on. All right. Hazard mitigation plan survey, okay. So I have, I brought a copy of the hazard mitigation plan if anybody wants to look at it. I don't know why I should really need to, but.
This is a single plan, a single copy, I have certainly.
Yes, a single copy because it's like a lot of pages.
It is.
So we need to designate a person that will share our responses with Vermont Emergency Management using the link below. I would say our emergency management director here, but he's not here to ask. Can I ask Ben Mishure to help with that?
What's that?
Reporting our little, the results of our little conversation.
Well, there's a lot in the hazard mitigation plan.
Right.
For the emergency management director to do.
Right.
I mean, yeah, essentially it should be, I would say, the emergency management director's responsibility.
Yes.
But as I shared with you guys in the past, that if the emergency management director, if that's to be done correctly, that
Right.
Really there should be, I don't know what Peter wants as a peer, but
Right.
I mean, it's, there can be quite a bit of work with that.
Yeah.
Is all.
This is.
So I guess that's, I mean, that's up to him, I can't speak for him.
Right. That's old. It's from July. So tonight what we have to do is we have to talk about these questions quickly and then go back and share them with Vermont Emergency Management. So I guess we'll just start with the first question. Which individuals or groups within your community would be most harmed by or have the most difficult time recovering from a natural hazard event such as flooding, ice, wind, heat, wildfire? And these will be referred to as our frontline community members.
Is that not covered already in our hazard plan here?
It is not lined out in that way.
And this, this plan has been, it's past, it's public comment period. Are we, are we doing additional comments to it, changes to it at this point? Or is this getting modified by our action tonight?
I am not sure. This is just something they're requiring us to do.
Is that something?
Yes.
I don't think that it's a requirement for you guys to act on anything as a change.
You just have to discuss it.
I think they're looking for a response back.
Right.
Throughout the state to understand what communities.
It's a survey.
Yeah, essentially a survey.
Basically, here's your discussion and.
They want a response back from it, but essentially a survey, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it's something that needs to be voted on. I don't know that for sure, but
Just a discussion.
That was my take on it from the emails.
Yeah, my take was it just needed to be a discussion, but I would say most of our population is older or aging. And they would be the most vulnerable for people who have a house next to water.
Yeah.
Looking at the agricultural community.
Yeah, I know.
Ice, wind.
Ice, wind. Wind, yes.
We have all the sleep.
Which are all the things that are covered in.
Trees, huh?
Yeah. Hazard mitigation plan, flooding and wind, those are your.
Ice.
Yes. Paul?
This is only a suggestion based on past experience, but your players at this table should probably, most likely be your planning commissioner. They create your town plan. Your emergency management coordinator, who is going to be very involved in an event like that along with your fire chief. And if nothing else, probably your, I mean, if nobody else to be included, possibly your emergency service, but that would be within jurisdiction of your fire chief and your EMT anyway. Those are your real players. And whoever your Wyndham County Regional Representative is would also be a player at that table because Wyndham has a lot of say on how we create these and design these.
Right.
So we can hear him. Thank you.
All right, man. Thanks.
Given the input, Madam Chair from Wollbannick, I suggest that we immediately move to table this to the next meeting and make a concerted effort to see if we can have those people present for this discussion.
I also remember from past experiences, this is more, this process you're in right now is more or less just a stamp saying we recognize, we need this. And then you put your players in motion, but they probably can fill that survey out much better than you could right now.
Thank you for your predicate directions, appreciate it. I'd like to move, move to table and with the intent of seeking the people at Paul just to enunciate.
I have a motion, second? Okay. I have a motion to table the hazard mitigation plan survey until April, the April 12th meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Moving on. Chip?
Oh, so glad we have this time to do this.
I know.
After watching your last meeting and hearing discussion on trustees of public funds, I just wanted to share the conversation that I had with office staff. This is a brief one-pager that is held by the Assistant Clerk as a reminder of the public funds that you have and where they originated from and then what their purposes are. And what is the reality here in terms of fiscal responsibility? And then whether or not we should try to get out of that fiscal responsibility because financially it doesn't make sense anymore. So I'll give you a chance to read through with the general understanding that at the time that these fiduciary responsibilities were turned over to the town, the amount of money involved in principle was a meaningful amount of money, was, was generating sufficient value in earnings to meet the obligation that was provided at that time? And we are now 50-plus years beyond for the most recent one? And so the whole process of holding funds, 350 bucks, in a separate account out of bank and having someone do and organize one penny or two penny journal entries monthly, for which the only thing changing in that account is the interest being earned for the last 10, 12 years? No expenditures have gone out because there's not enough money to do anything with this. So looking through all of those funds that you have, I don't know if you printed the balance sheet for Fund 502, but at some point I passed out to the board all the balance sheets and Fund 502 is the fiduciary fund. There are lots of accounts on there. What we did in another town that I've worked with, we inquired first with town council and then the treasurer drafts a letter to probate explaining that this no longer makes sense. And the board can choose for each one of these what you would like to have happen. It can be that the total value is given to another organization who has the same goal that this had intended and that they then administer it. And for some of these, that may mean flags or decorations for soldiers. The flags get put up by the legion and the legion buys those every year. So the 350 for one time closes us out of doing penny journal entries, but we give it to the legion for the purpose of buying flags. And we've met the obligation because the long-term commitment since 1956 can't be obtained in the East and West Parish to decorate soldiers' graves. We just can't do that for 12 cents a year. So looking at all of those various funds, including the top one, the Campbell Fund, 1876 I think was the year, $5,000 was the total, and you were endowed if you had $5,000. Today, $5,000 doesn't generate enough money to pay a person's oil bill. So again, this one built up to a level of $8,000 over time by not being used. It was generating about $59 to $60 of interest monthly. But checks are being written for 100, 150, 200, 250, $300. And so recently, because the commitment was 5,000, the trustees of public funds took 3,000 off of that, put it into the checkbook to distribute the funds. So what interest we were gaining, it's going to be cut in half. And again, the whole principal of the 5,000 for the indigent, if you will, you can no longer ask anyone who comes to you for aid, whether they're on food stamps, whether they're on Medicaid, whether there's anything about them, in which in 1876, none of those public services were available. So it was clear, the option was to go to the service officer of the town and try to get help. So its purpose was met, ran for a long time, but today, for this amount of money, the amount of overhead to just maintain the money, you can't justify financially doing it.
Yes, Chip, the, so these funds, I wanted to correct my impression, these funds haven't increased in proportion to inflation since 1876. They were essentially used down to their threshold constantly, not, not really invested and increased, but actually used down to that, their original gift amount. So the original gift amount at $5,000 was spectacular in 1876 and is relatively trivial now.
Depends who you are with a nice trivia.
But from a town point of view, relatively trivial.
Yes.
And so even that biggest one would be something that we don't really need to manage separately now that is comparatively small.
Well, and, and because of the nature of which it was granted, you can't ask the questions to determine whether someone qualifies. However, I can tell you checks are still being written out of that Campbell Fund to individuals and typically it's the months of November and December. So again, let's, I can also tell you that all of the bank accounts, bank statements aren't coming to this town hall.
Correct.
And I'm the one trying to do the reconciliation and so we're chasing stuff. As well, I'm not sure that the trustees of public funds is an active group of three who meet, take minutes and vote on whether to take action or not. I don't think that's happening. So the purpose of all of this is really to say, are we, and you as a board, are the fiduciary responsible for all deposits, everything held in accounts? Is this the best thing for us to still be doing with these amounts of monies? And on that balance sheet you just got handed, you're looking at the top lines, which are the assets. There are significant assets in there. Some of those that are the investments, $60,000, $30,000, various amounts, even those statements which are held in CDs don't meet a threshold test which now has been set at $100,000. If you're not managing something for $100,000, then is it still responsible to hang on to that when it's not generating anything that can meet the purpose? So I don't know what the F. Miller Milk Fund is, but that must have a purpose. It's not on this one, it's not in this list.
It's not that Frank Miller Upfront Fund?
Yeah.
I mean, it looks like it's, it's probably that one.
Yeah.
And then the question to that was, why doesn't it belong to schools? Because it was given to schools.
At the time, town and school.
One, yeah.
And the town still has it.
So we could give it to schools?
We could gift it to the school. Well, that becomes a, you know, the whole question is why does it exist now? It's to provide something for students. So yes, can we dissolve it? Is it totally expendable? Meaning there's no restriction on the amount of money? We can spend it down to zero. We just never have. Each one of these, I think, bears looking at and determining whether or not you should be maintaining these or trying to dissolve these and disseminate the funds. Meet the obligation, but not carry the obligation longer.
And if we can actually legally dissolve them?
You can. You have to go through probate because all of these are actions taken through probate to award you value. So that's what the exercise was, you briefly talked about at your last meeting about consolidating. Well, I'm not saying consolidate, I'm saying obluterate. Determine that for $200 to maintain one gravesite on the interest only, nothing, not even your perpetual care money, makes enough money to mow the grass. It's not that we should lose the perpetual care fund, but our funding to mow the grass is in the general fund as a regular expense. And all the interest that that's earning is not coming back to the general fund at all, it just keeps growing over here. So that's the quandary. One of the choices you have is to do nothing.
I'm not saying do nothing, but I have had from the last meeting when this was mentioned, I have had a people, a couple of people call me with concerns, so I think it's something we need to discuss and research and come back to later.
Oh, absolutely. But you've got the list in front of you of what those assets are. I can't even tell you that I've seen the bank statements for all of them because I haven't. There's a whole slew of the larger investment ones. I, you know, I had spent the day with the auditors here yesterday and they're asking for. I spent the day with the auditors here yesterday and they're asking for bank statements and can't produce them. So that suggests there's just overall how it's being administered.
And by that happening, I didn't even know that those, some of these existed because we don't get the statements here.
Is this a, I appreciate your due diligence on this, is this the complete list of accounts that you just know of or is it a comprehensive list that you're date certain tonight that this is it, this is what we have?
So if it's not in the financials and I'm not getting the statements, I don't know about it.
Okay.
So this is what I know about. There are additional funds that at this point have a separate bank account, which I think should just be consolidated to the general fund checkbook and run through that series of due-to-from accounts that we've seen in the past. Because the mechanism, if you will, of loading that account, I want to say it's capital improvement or something that has its own bank account. And right now, I think the general fund owes it $50,000 or something from years of transfers, but the money never moved. I'm suggesting let's just stop that crap and close it, put it in the general fund. Like every other fund, there's an amount owed to it from the general fund checkbook. We write our checks from one place. We deposit all our money in one place. Simplify this. So there's many of those types of accounts.
Well, thank you very much. I'm not a, I'm sorry, Dan, did you want to speak?
Where are these statements, bank statements coming? If we don't know where they're coming? They don't come to here. Where do they go? That's my question. Pete Harrison, P L Box 43 or something like that. He's the trustee of public funds, one of the three. There may not, and again, they may have vacancies, I don't know. Those are elected positions.
They're elected positions.
Yeah. And so.
Pete's very friendly, he'll be happy to talk to you.
Oh, yeah. When looking for stuff, we were missing bank statements in '22 for the audit, some November, December, January of '22, November, December of '21. In order to do the audit, I needed those statements because checks were clearing the bank. And our book said there's 1,200 bucks in the checkbook and bank statement when I got it said there's 500. Well, something changed.
They write, Pete, like Pete writes the checks as well?
Yes. Writes, signs.
Seems like there's got to be a better way to do that.
Well, that's what the trustees do of public funds. What I don't know is, is they as a group are subject of a meeting law. And so warned that they're going to meet, set an agenda, meet, take minutes, take action. And what my belief is what's happening is he's contacted, he agrees and pays a bill. He doesn't pay the person, he pays the vendor.
Oh, may I? Madam Chair, everyone present, thank you. So thank you very much again for your synopsis. I'm not an expert on this, however, there's $152,757 here, so this is a substantial amount of money. Moreover, I would be concerned as a taxpayer and a citizen as to what our fiduciary responsibility is to all these financial funds as they were originally established, irrespective of the excellent comments by Willis tonight. Before we do anything to make sure we get a very accurate and clear, concise legal opinion from a responsible authority as to how we can and cannot use them, I would also, Mr. Vice Chair and Chair and rest of the board, I think it's probably very important that we get, in the interest of time, see if we can get Pete in to illuminate the terrain in which we now currently find ourselves deployed. But thank you for doing exactly what we asked you to do because it's good to know that this, because this is, these are our assets. And this isn't, I mean, still $152,000.
Yes. They're fiduciarily responsible for them, they're assets by your federal ID, but they're totally restricted in one way, shape or form.
And the question, which we don't know, is what is, how do we unravel that? How do we untie that?
Right. And under the circumstances where we're carrying seven bank accounts.
Yeah. Good job. Thank you.
Peter is in South Carolina, so I don't know when he, I think maybe May he's home.
Just a note that of the 152, 104,000 approximately are for the cemeteries collectively for individual cemeteries and all, but it's basically cemetery money. And I could see the cemeteries able to use the income from that money for projects and could also readily see consolidating all of the cemetery's funds in town into one cemetery portion. And just even if we don't, even if we don't get rid of these funds, if we simply consolidate them under cemeteries collectively and then the cemetery commission does its due diligence in operating cemeteries, that would make it simpler anyway.
Yes.
I have a quick question building on what you just said. So in your travels, which are a lot, have you seen other towns do this?
Yes.
Okay. So you'd be able to also maybe present a, some type of a comparable strategy that you've seen before?
So.
That's best practices?
Well, the steps that I started with and you've confirmed, we want to know on each case, when did it originate? What was its purpose? What are the strings attached? There are expendable trusts, meaning the total amount can be spent. Under that circumstance, you may choose to instruct the trustees of public funds to expend it. It's costing us money to have somebody come in and reconcile and post the penny interest. So, but it's got to be spent on its purpose. For the larger ones, if it's a purpose that you can't by federal law ask questions, then your obligation to meet what was laid out in 1876 no longer is relevant. You can't do that. Somehow you are doing it, but you can't do it. So that process says, look, probate, this is how it was given to us. Rules today are this. We would like to take these funds and turn them over to Westminster Cares and let Westminster Cares administer them to Westminster residents, which is something of a service they already do. And they are outside of the regulations, if you will, that the town is under.
I think it's a great idea.
And that's where you.
My position would just be we want to make sure we have an ironclad legal.
Yes.
Opinion that enables us to make sure we're making this decision that is correct and it has precedence.
Yep.
And we can do it.
Yeah. In the end, any of the non expendable funds, meaning where the principal balance can't be spent, you have to go back to the voters and say, this is what we want to do and have them approve that this is the action the board wants to take and then probate addresses it. So you're being relieved first by the voters of this fiduciary obligation and then if probate agrees, the action takes place.
So that'd be town meeting next year.
Or whenever you have a town meeting, yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Is there anything else on the agenda you want me to be available to participate in?
I don't think I have anything. Does anyone want Chip to say for anything?
No, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Sheriff, I'll be quick. So I spoke with the sheriff. He should come in and address the board. He did mention, which we'll do at a future date, he did mention that he had spoken with Karen and Putney and they are interested in doing a joint, however, that was set up before between Putney and Westminster. I inquired as to why that didn't work before and he said there were staffing issues at that time. And then we decreased the budget due to the staffing issues. And then we basically, because we reduced our funding for the sheriff, the arrangement between the two towns wasn't going to work because Putney was basically, they were having sheriff there twice as, twice as much as Westminster was. And it was creating conflict because they weren't here enough. But now they have more staff and he doesn't feel that would be an issue, but I told him he had to come and address the board. But I also feel like we should research our other options because my opinion from the voters was that they wanted to know what their options were. So.
What is the process of researching our other options?
Some phone calls. To start with.
I don't know if we have a organized list of other options yet to even research. I mean, there were some things mentioned at town meeting.
Your options are checking with Rockingham, checking with Walpole, hiring an independent person.
Hiring our own constable.
That's pretty much it. Unless any, did I miss anything?
Somebody needs to get do some legwork and get some numbers.
That's pretty much what it is, is phone calls and numbers.
Just briefly, we did have, break my phone long, Jason, we did have the representatives of Bellows Falls, Rockingham here and they too had expressed their staffing issues.
So they sort of said, I'm not sure we can. Is that what they were saying? And we haven't had that conversation with Walpole?
No, we have not.
We didn't even really have a conversation with Rockingham. It was just a comment that they replied, responded to. There was no monies, there wasn't.
No presentations?
No.
It would be, I mean, we have, I believe that town meeting put $120,000 into this Knowing that that is what the town has to spend, perhaps others, rather than just the sheriff, would be willing to talk to us about their proposals or even any internal proposals that we have.
Or board number two would be willing to go to a meeting in Walpole or Rockingham or whatever and bring it to them.
I certainly have no problem volunteering myself for Walpole.
I would do the same.
Anybody want to make a motion to do that or do you want to just go?
Happy to do it.
We're just getting information, so.
Right.
Information. And what, how about, what would it take to prepare a proposal for essentially in-house service, you know, a town police officer, a constable, whatever you call them?
I don't think you can afford it for $120,000.
I think Stephen's talking about the process though. Should we at least acquire what the process would be?
Obviously, we would have to think of what does a person cost and then what does the equipment cost? And it could be that we have an affordable possibility, but it could be that the equipment could be unaffordable as well. Or the backup.
Yeah, you've got to have one. BLCT could probably answer that question.
Good.
So Jason and I though will, will meet with Bellows Falls and Walpole for information on change.
Okay, thank you. That was good. Thank you, thank you.
Just like to save a little time about Walpole and the anti-officers can act on their color a lot in Vermont.
Yeah.
They save some time.
Looks like we've done half.
So right there, you've done half. You've got one meeting, you go. Okay. Paul?
Thank you.
The town did it one time not so long ago. I have a constable who, that person served as more as a liaison between agencies around us. And I don't, you know, that might be part of what that money could be spent on is to put that back into the service appointments. It's a starting point. They can build relationships with the area departments. I understand what this gentleman just said, so that rules out a couple, but there's somebody to do some legwork for you and have a presence in town as well.
Do we want to have a discussion about a constable at a different time? Get more info?
Did you say you want me constable?
Yeah. Did you just call?
Sure you want me to?
I remember my dad who always drove too fast when he drove. Being irritated by what Westminster did have the town constable at one time a long time ago. He doesn't drive anymore, so don't worry.
So we'll do some research and come back to the constable thing. With the, via.
Yeah, well, Jason and I.
Okay, we'll gather info and table it. Town clerk resignation acknowledgement. So on March 10th, we received a letter from Pauline. Dear Katrina, Kevin, Jason, Stephen and Dan, after weeks of deliberation, I made the decision to return to the world of school administration and have accepted a position with Compass School. I am very excited to assume this role, but am melancholy about leaving the town of Westminster as town clerk. It's been an interesting and rewarding adventure since October 2020. My plan is to leave town hall on March 31st, 2023 and begin my new career with Compass on April 3rd. In the interim, she will support the clerk's office towards any, an easy transition. Her recommendation to the select board is to appoint Patty Mark as town clerk and Ally Bigwood as assistant town clerk. This configuration has worked well when the office was transitioning into me coming on board. Both Patty and Ally have a great partnership and the experience and background knowledge to move forward with town clerk office functions. Please reach out with any questions or concerns. Best regards, Pauline. The notice of vacancy for town clerk has been posted. We had 10 days to post that and that was Monday, I believe. So that the notice of the vacancy has been posted. And the vacancy reads that the select board will appoint in-town clerk at their meeting on April 26th from anybody who turns in a letter of interest.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Pauline Blake O'Brien as town clerk.
Kevin Hughes seconded that.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the resignation of Pauline Blake O'Brien as town clerk. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Moving on. Faith's Ford speed limit request.
Do you need to appoint Patty? Is that where we're going to go or?
I believe we do.
I'm not sure, but so by, hold on, Larry sent me an email. By state statute.
She needs our map.
She is automatically take, assumed to the role of town clerk.
Do we need to appoint Allison as assistant town clerk?
She's already been appointed.
Yep.
Assistant town clerk is, that's a not an appointed position, it's hired, correct?
It's hired by the clerk.
It's hired by the clerk, so Patty's covered that. So we're good. I don't think I have Larry's printed email on that. Are we okay to move forward?
Yeah.
All right. Faith's Ford speed limit request.
Okay, I put this through emails from Faith. I don't know how to say his last name, but it's Faith's Toyota Ford. And I wrote a letter per the Vermont Agency of Transportation because they do not set speed limits on state highways. State statute requires that speed limits on state maintained highways be set by the Vermont Traffic Committee. So town's governing body typically, so the select board may request a change in speed limit on a state highway by writing a letter. I formulated a letter. It doesn't mean that you have to sign, doesn't mean you have to agree with his request for the 1.2 miles to be brought down to 35 miles per hour. He's claiming numerous accidents to this past winter, but he doesn't think winter had anything to do with it because it was fairly dry this winter. He just, and there's no particular. He just, and there's no particular time of day when these accidents occur. So it's your pleasure, if you choose to sign this letter, I can have it sent up to V-Trans and then they do their, their legwork on it.
What portion of road are they interested in or does your letter mention?
All right, so it said, it does say, uh, so if you're heading south on Route 5 in front of Compass School, the speed limit is 40, then jumps to 50 at the recycling center.
Mm-hmm.
And then stays 50 for 1.2 miles past Father's Restaurant, Faith Ford, and then drops to 35 in front of Harlow's Farm Stand Cafe Loco. And stays 35 until you get to the Wyndham Northeast, just pass that and then it goes to 50 again.
For a tiny stretch of road.
Right. Again, this is up to you, if you, you don't have to, you can, but if you would like. I did the test, it's the gut, I think it's the gut test or something like that. It's, um, I didn't have anyone with me, but I drive that way every day, twice a day. And I am consistently, I didn't look, like they say, don't look at your speedometer, I am consistently within five miles per hour of 50 since I've got this request. So it's a, it's a, it's a comfortable, I don't feel like I'm speeding, I don't feel like I'm going too slow. Um, I, but it's, I, the customers that are going in there, I think they see the beginning of the dealership and they don't know where the opening is. And that's all going to change, so that, so they really slow, slow, slow down to, to pull in. I think he's changing that whole front end when he rebuilds. It's going to be a larger opening for, to pull into his buildings. Per, per the DRB meeting that I attended, so. He's doing a whole huge brand new building out there. So I don't know.
I have no preference, I speed everywhere, so.
I, I've always been a little bit heavy, but I always thought it was a little fast too, even, you know. So that's, my gut is, I wish it'd be 40 down through there, there's a lot of businesses and fathers and people pulling in.
He's requesting 35, that's why it's in the letter, but.
Yes, Chuck?
Mark Pickren, the engineer for the state cautioned us on this in other places. And what they'll do is a traffic study, and if they find that the average traffic is 60 going by there, they'll bump it up to 55. It's not necessarily going to go down when you do this.
That's right.
Just a warning, that's all.
Okay. Yes, Paul?
Just a public comment, I live on the back Westminster Road, that road was always posted at 35 with two dropdowns, the 35 by My Road, Berkshire Heights and Trailer Park. It has since been changed a few years ago to 35 from end to end, it doesn't work. There's no one doing 35.
Right, right now, it's, everybody's gearing up for the Indy 500, more of the time trial road.
So the net effect on that is for people who live on these roads, they're being pushed by freight trains to job everybody behind them.
And once again, where's the sheriff? Oh, that's right, I can go home and see him anywhere. Have a nice day.
So it's a nice suggestion, but I just don't see it working. Doesn't work on it.
And technically, it's not our road anyway.
Yeah, it was specifically endorsing Ally's letter if we choose to.
Even if you sign it, doesn't mean they're going to do it.
That doesn't mean they're going to do it.
Correct.
It, 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 just like Chuck said, it could be even faster.
Right. Can, can the business owner appeal directly to the Vermont Transportation Board?
I didn't see that in here, Stephen. I didn't see that in the response.
He can do this direct appeal without us, with or without our endorsement.
It didn't, it doesn't say that, a town's governing body may request a change.
Okay, so, so it's difficult for him to say, as a, as an individual, a private person, please slow it down.
Right.
Correct.
And, and we would be the, the date keeper to, to that request going forward.
Yeah.
At this point, Madam Chair, I'll move to close debate and ask for a vote. Move to vote. Whether or not we're going to sign this letter or not.
I have no prob, I'll sign it, I mean, it's not our choice anyway.
Well, that's, that's a called question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to call.
Unless you have more to discuss.
I was just wondering about putting it down, up to 40 to make it easier to swallow.
You can't do that yourself.
No.
No, I mean, write in the letter.
In the letter.
Move the letter to 40.
Write in the letter, write by 40.
That sounds reasonable to me.
That's not what the guy asked for.
It's not what he asked for, but I, if you choose to sign this letter tonight, I can go down and, I, I, it's up on my computer, I can change it to 40 if that's your preference. Or if you choose not to sign, just let me know what you want to do.
Do we want to sign it? That's a simple question, and 35 reporting.
Well, I will move, I will move to vote on the letter with the amendment from Stephen to increase the maximum mph to $40 per hour.
I'll second.
I have a motion to sign, endorse a letter to reduce the speed limit on Route 5 in Faith Ford, a stretch of 1.2 mile road, miles of road, from, from 50 miles an hour to 40 miles per hour. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One abstention.
Oh, Stephen, I'm sorry, thank you.
Sorry, Stephen. Moving along. Award paving bids. We have paving bids. Somewhere, I have a file. Chuck, do you want to talk to paving bids since I really don't know much about? Or just, Jason, anybody?
I don't know any of that.
Here, Chuck, I read.
Do you want to know, are we putting out too big?
Yep.
Springfield paving came in the last.
Is that apples to apples?
Yes.
So they're all supposed to do the same thing? They all, no, I don't know, I got, I know what it is.
Well, then we see that it's all spelled out exactly the same.
Yep, 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 so.
So we broke it down.
Just because it's spelled out the same.
No, that's the way it is, apples to apples, yeah. That's why we did it this way, never used to be done this way, so it wasn't.
My, my question is some, you know, they, they've been on it and then they don't do what they say, that's.
Thank you, ma'am.
So.
No, because we're doing it by the square yard.
Okay, so you got, you keep an eye on that and make sure we get what we get.
Exactly.
Okay. Are you comfortable with Springfield paving?
I think so.
Okay, there you go.
So. So, bike came in, uh, 244,500, but they did not bring in their insurance. So that eliminates them. Um, Allstate was 259, 521. Basin Brothers was 221, 844. Springfield was 198, 698, 40. So Springfield actually was the cheapest of basins we've ever used. They all were roughly 20,000 difference. They've all paved here before.
I'll make a motion to approve the paving bid for Springfield Paving not to exceed 198, 698, 40 cents.
Uh, I will second that.
I have a motion to award the paving bid to Springfield Paving not to exceed 198,698, 40 cents. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Town manager search committee report.
Can I make it quick?
Yes, please, thank you.
We did have our meeting. It was in the snowstorm, so only half of our crew showed up. We have put together some advertisements to be, to be put out. We will, I will make sure you guys all get those on email in the next couple of days for your approval. We have sort of the long version and a short version. We've gone through a list of different ways to advertise. And I guess our next step would be, like, once we know for sure you're okay with those advertisements, we're going to need to get pricing, but it seems like it's going to be quite expensive if we. I know Mr. Major's mentioned you'd like to advertise in a lot of places. And it could be expensive, so we just want to make sure you guys are okay with that. The, the other thing is that you had mentioned, in my research, there's actually quite a few towns in Vermont looking for town managers, so this might not be something that happens right off, but we certainly are going to keep getting together and trying to get the ball rolling as fast as possible and as effectively as possible. That's about it, you guys have any questions or?
What's, what's expensive? Jordan, number?
Yeah, you can, you can address one of them.
I can address one of them.
Yeah.
So, um, there's, so VLCT for us is free, um, to advertise. It, the ad runs for 30 days and then you can just renew it. If we hired a recruitment service to help us with advertising, et cetera, we'd give them the ad copy, they spread it around, they would create ad copy for us, but we've basically done that already. Um, and the estimates, the one estimate that I have, does the New England area, also has national outreach, and it was $1,000 is what he budgeted for advertising alone. Um, there's additional fees if we want them to do additional things, but we're going to try to get more numbers from other recruitment services, but initially roughly probably $1,000 to $1,500 for advertising.
Or what, one just add?
Uh, so it, um, that would go to, there was the I-C-Y-M or something like that, it was national. Um, and I can't remember what that stood for. New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Maine, and Vermont. And whatever newspaper, or plural newspapers we chose.
I also found that some other towns have advertised on Indeed, ZipRecruiter, Craigslist. There's the State of Vermont Governor Careers, uh, you know, our webpage and that type of thing. Obviously, we run it on that, but I guess once we get you to look at our, our ads and see if you think that they're adequate, um, from there we would have to decide, you know, we'll just write on the quotes and stuff and get them back to you for your approval on those. And then from that point on, hopefully we'll start to receive some applications.
Where does the money come from for the hiring process? What, what sort of budget do we have, what's the?
I don't know anything about that at this point. That's, that's kind of why we're bringing that to you folks. I was going to, I was actually going to ask for some information about the previous hiring. Uh, you know, maybe what was spent on that. I know VLCT, I believe, was the company that helped us with that. They did give us a quote or a rough estimate of what they were charged to do the entire thing, but I don't know, just with my research, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of different places that we can advertise. Again, how much do we, you know, how much do we want to spend?
That might come out of the select board expense line.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, it might.
So I guess I'll do it for you guys.
I don't think VLCT did much on our last.
No, they didn't.
Debacle.
Cause I.
Okay, yeah. They, uh, they recommended a firm to do a background check, but they didn't do it themselves. It was a separate company.
Right, right.
That quite frankly didn't do a very good job for what we paid them.
Right.
In my opinion.
Yeah. And I think we're at the moment, you know, we're kind of going step by step. I know something we need to, we need to get done and of course we want to get Ally some help and the rest of the girls downstairs, but at the same time, I would like to make sure that we try to make the best decision that we can make. So we'll, we'll research the rest of them, we'll get to the, the advertisements that we came up with, see what you think, and if you can get them back to us, that'd be awesome. And we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would add, does it, do you like me to number, like, we know what we got to spend on this. So then, I mean, I don't know how you know.
Well, that's, well, that's why I was going to, you know, just see if you guys had from the last time what you spent. And if you were willing to spend that much again, or if you thought you'd want to spend more. That could be something that I could ask Ashley as a question, and Ally might know, you know, she may have.
You're saying we need a budget for this.
It was 600, it was, we got a deal.
No, it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be.
Deals always cost you in the end.
600 and, 600 and change, and because he had just done the previous fellow's background check for another establishment, we, we could charge half price. Such a deal. So it's 300 bucks.
It would have been 700 bucks, like 60, 80 or something.
Yeah.
It would seem in this job environment, hiring somebody for a salary which is not huge, it'd be quite a challenge to get somebody. And we will need to look pretty broadly in order to find anybody. And then we want somebody who will actually stay and do a good job. So it would seem that we, I mean, local businesses looking for a manager at this time would be paying a good bit more than $700 or $7,000 to do this sort of thing. Uh, so I would be surprised if, if we were to have to advertise generously and do our due diligence in terms of background check, appropriate time and all that, and spend what we need in order to get a town manager that to all is happy with.
Yeah, like I said, we just had, we just had the one meeting so far, but I think, you know, collectively, that's what we're, that was going to be our next question after we, you know, if you guys think the advertisement is good, then of course our next question is how much, how much are we willing to put towards that, which would also be a decision you folks would have to make, you know.
So as soon as you come up with that, that'd be great.
Yep.
So we'll move with the speed.
Has anybody read the ads? The, the financial one is one we've already approved because it's the one I wrote earlier this summer.
I think we put it in your packet.
Just there and.
It's there, yeah.
And we have, we have two versions, sort of a short version and a longer version. We could run the longer version like on our website or whatever, um, in places that it's either free or less expensive, and then we could just do a little bit of blip on the things that cost a lot. Hopefully reach the most people that, you know, that might be, hopefully.
First objective obviously is to get a pool of qualified candidates.
Right.
Begin the initial consultation and then we can go into the necessity, Stephen, for a more thorough and obviously more expensive background check. To make sure what we learned the last time doesn't repeat, that's not repeated.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Do we want to review the ad copy and vote on it next meeting? Give you time to review it or do two seconds right now?
So we have this hiring, Town, Town of Westminster Hiring Town Manager Short. And this has a, a list of duties.
Yes.
Um, and characteristics or, or background. Um, there's that one, and is there a separate one as well?
Yes, that's the financial director.
So, and, and is that also for essentially a town manager as well?
Well, I just want to explain what we discussed a little bit. Our discussion actually entailed having sort of a three option plan. It would be great to find a town manager who was good with the people and did the managerial portion of it. And also a town manager that was, uh, you know, accountant savvy and, and, you know, could, could do the financial side of it as well. But we thought, you know, just to utilize the best of everything, maybe we look for a financial advisor who might have a part-time position, depending on how much is there. And then have a town manager who would just simply manage the day-to-day business of the town. So that's why we have a couple of different versions. And I guess we're also, that was a question that we had, you know, do you think, do we just want to limit ourselves to finding one person to cover everything? Or would you be open to, you know, having a two-part?
Well, I'm certainly open to, you know, I can't believe I'm the senior, I'm the senior person here now, crazy, right? I'm certainly open to, as you put it, relationship management skills in this day and age for this particular role are essential.
Yes.
This individual, he or she must be able to work well with others.
Yes.
And suffer, um, you know, disgruntledness as it comes in well.
Right.
At the same time, if, you know, what we're asking a lot is, Stephen pointed out, a very difficult job market. If that means we have to bifurcate it. very difficult job market, if that means we have to bifurcate it, I'm certainly open to anything as long as we get that qualified leader to be downstairs and make sure that he or she treats everybody with respect and is a good administrator and knows how to pivot and put people in the places they need to be and get things done in a timely fashion.
Right.
The finance thing is getting more and more complicated.
Right.
But if we can find that diamond in the rough, hey, have at it. But I'm, I'm wide open to having it bifurcated if necessary.
Okay.
Thank you. Bringing that up is, it's very important. Yes.
So, so Katrina, when do we decide which direction we're going, or do we go and advertise for both things now, um, and, and see what's out there? It is, it seems like either we go for just a town manager, or we make the decision it's gonna be two separate jobs and advertise for both, or we leave it to fate and we advertise for both and see what comes up.
Right.
I think if you're, I think if you're using the, the wider net, you know, we very probably could get lucky, or luckier by advertising for both, and we might find somebody who actually could.
Right. I guess, I guess we sort of thought at the meeting maybe that, uh, you know, if we advertise for both, of course it's more expensive, but then, as you said, we left it to fate and we were lucky enough to have somebody walk through the door, not only be the perfect candidate as far as managing the town, but also says, you know, I've got a degree in accounting and I, I am familiar with all of your, uh, your computer programs, your, you know, so I, I guess it's up to, you know, basically we're, we're trying to get everybody help as soon as possible, some sort of help.
But when somebody responds to this ad, um, and they maybe ask, what does it pay?
Right.
And if they can do both jobs, do they get both salaries?
Right.
Do we then spend more for town manager than we are currently spending?
There is a line for finance, and there is a line for town manager.
There's a, there's a, there's a hiring or a, um, a salary line.
That's right.
And so we, we could hire both people as one item and pay them both salaries.
That's right.
But we could also actually, we already had it built in that we could hire two separate people, because the budget's built that way.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, so, so Chris would have an answer to the person, theoretical person who comes and says, I can do one or the other or both.
Right.
And so that, that, that would be, that, at least that information is already built into our town budget. There's always negotiations as well, as we assume.
Right. I did find on, uh, with my research that a lot of these advertisements, they are advertising, uh, you know, a pay, pay rate basically. And we kinda discussed that, and I don't, you know, we weren't really sure, being that we might have the two positions, you know, do we put that out? Do we try to have somebody? I mean, again, do we, you know, do we deter people from sending in an application by not saying how much we'd be willing to pay? Um, or do we deter them by saying how much we're willing to pay? You know what I mean? It's one of those things where, uh, cause some of the towns that you'll see if you look online that are advertising in Vermont, they have pretty substantial salaries for that position. So, but again, Burlington is not Westminster, Westminster is not Burlington, so, um, there's a lot of little tricky parts to the whole thing, so.
Do we feel like approving the ad copy or? Okay.
I move to approve the, uh, the advertising solicitation for hiring a town manager and or finance director as written.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to accept the ad copy as written for town manager and finance director as written. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Do we wanna discuss the budget for spending, or? Yes, Paul?
Suggestion made to be commensurate in level of experience.
It's in, it, I think
Spending for salary?
Spending, I was, spending for ad was what I was focusing on, not salary.
Both ways, you will leave your door open and negotiate.
Yeah. I think, I believe, I believe the ad says, doesn't list any salaries.
We do stick salaries in our ad. Yeah, cause we were just not sure, you know, would it be better to have somebody come and, you know, at least get a chance to talk with them before.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, you know, cause you don't know necessarily, I mean, I would, I would hope that any candidates would understand that Burlington is obviously gonna pay more than Westminster, but, you know, if you put it in there and they, they see a hundred something thousand dollars, you know, is everybody gonna send their application there? So I think we're just hoping at least to get a start and try to get something rolling along here.
You never had a salary in your own, in the ad.
Right, that's what I thought. Um, do we wanna discuss budget for spending for advertising?
What's the select, what's the select board's, uh, line on? Yeah, you know.
I can go check.
I thought it was like, I thought it was under three thousand dollars, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I don't think
It's not a lot.
It doesn't seem like it would necessarily cover, cover this.
Yeah, that seems like, that's good.
That's more like, we need to replace one of these microphones.
Well, well, yeah. Well, while she's getting that info, can we move on to Road Foreman's report, or do we wanna continue discussion? Road Foreman's report?
Road Foreman's report. Sorry, everybody's familiar, we had a snowstorm last Tuesday. Two towns were totally without power until Saturday. There's still communication lines down throughout the town, there's still carnage, there's trees down that we continue to clean up. Since then, the roads have thawed out. Um, so now experiencing mud where quarry's been raven, uh, wall we've got here has been raking. Um, we've been continuing around, did a little quick math to figure out what we had for damage, just on gravel loss. We figured fifty miles of road, fifteen feet wide, which all our roads are wider than that, but there's a few that aren't. So on an average, fifteen feet wide, one inch thick, twelve thousand yards gravel. At twelve fifty yard, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar. You know what our budget is for stolen gravel per year?
Not that much.
Fifty. So every time, and this isn't the first time this year, this has happened a couple times. There's no way to avoid it. We've got rubber, cotton edges, we got all kinds of things. There's no way to avoid it. So every time this happens, we go backwards. So those you got fifty thousand, that's stone and gravel in our budget. So I'm just saying, and, okay, not just that, but as time goes on and the environment changes, and this continues to happen year after year, gravel's not a renewable resource. Once it's gone, it's gone. So if this continues to happen, we really gotta start thinking into the future. You know, people said before, maybe we should pave all the roads, and I go, ah, we're gonna pave all roads. I don't wanna live on paved roads. But the more I think about it, well, you do. So, but no, but the more you think about it, we're not gonna be able to keep up as a community with the gravel we're losing, with what there is with gravel around us to put it back. Something to just think about. If every time it snows, now they, the state's changed it, so now they want us to pulse the roads also in January, just like in the spring. Keep having trucks off. No way to enforce it, but they still would like us to do it. So just food for thought here.
Yes, Ally?
In your selectmen's expense, you have twenty-six, just shy of twenty-seven hundred dollars left.
How about in the, um, uh, I mean, is there a expense for town hall administration that would correspond to that?
I think that's what I was just thinking about.
What do we?
Finance officer line has thirty-three sixty in it. So that would help.
Yep. And I'm assuming our town manager stuff is all eaten up?
Not for me, I didn't do it.
I know, I know what you're saying.
No, you did a great job.
Let's see. I was looking for the treasure. They don't put it, it's not a treasure. Municipal building, heating, water, no. No, no, no.
So there's thirty-six for the finance director?
Yep.
Is that what you said?
Yes, and twenty-seven, just shy of twenty-seven in your expense line.
Do we, so, I'm just trying to keep the town hiring committee moving. If they had, so a thousand dollars gives them a month if they place the ads through the, through a recruitment service. I don't know what it would cost.
Chris, you know, you have any idea what you need for?
I don't really, and I don't, I mean, all of it is basically hinging on, you know, the, the extent that everybody wants to go. Um, we, you know, we can certainly start small, it, it doesn't, it never hurts, I mean, you know, if we can get somebody for, you know, a small advertisement fee, that's one thing, but, you know, I don't know what the chances of that would be, Greg.
Chances of dismal.
Dismal, yeah, probably.
Dismal.
Yeah.
You could spend a thousand dollars and run it for a month and see what happens. And then come back to board.
Do you, yeah, do you want us to, I'm sorry.
It's just a thought, I'm just throwing it out there, just to keep it moving.
Well, what we could do is, uh, do a little research, a little further research, now that you guys have approved the ads, we can start calling everybody and find out, um, you know, where everybody is money-wise.
And then in the interim, we can also see what we can find in our budget to make sure that, or not make sure, hopefully make sure within the guidelines we find enough capital to, uh,
Right.
to make direct opportunity.
I do know Indeed is around six hundred dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look for the money, you'll come up with the, uh, with what you need, and hopefully the next meeting, we'll be ready to go.
Yep.
Good question. Yes, ma'am. Do, does this, do they, do they go to colleges that have public administration program?
Well, that was one of the other, uh, options that I had down, and I, I don't know if like BTC has a political science, you know, or, or where the political science people are. Um, but that's also something that we can definitely research to find out. I thought about that as well, if there was like a, uh, what are they, well, I don't remember what they call those things, but when you're coming out of college, you go to a little event, a hiring forum, if there's something like that also, you know, where they
A job fair.
Yeah, a job fair, thank you. If there's, uh, you know, because I mean, who, who's to know? Maybe somebody comes right out of college and they really are, you know, this is a great job for them, you know? It's not, uh, you know, it's not like trying to run a big city, and, you know, they may, they may do well, so.
I believe we, I believe we had one of those at one time, probably, probably in Paul's time, the out of college, maybe, maybe before then, but
The one that
Not, not saying you couldn't find somebody that's really good.
Right.
That one ended up, I think, bad too after a year, but
Oh, 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 yes, yeah. And oftentimes, just to be honest, they start here and things are going well, and they're making X amount of dollars, and all of a sudden the next town says, well, Jesus kid, everyone's raving about him. Yeah. We'll pay him more money, you know, so. It's just the stuff that, you know, it could, it could very well be, you know? It'd be awesome to find some kid that comes out of college and wants to live right here and raise his family and stay for, you know, forty years.
These are risks and assessments we can make as we make those questions, as we move through the group.
I think
We certainly can designate and, hey, I mean, you can ask that question. I mean, three years from now, you're doing well, but
Right.
You get a job offer.
Yeah, where do you see yourself?
There you go.
Is this the stuff?
It is part of the whole risk of this process.
Right, right. I, I say every question is fair, you know what I mean?
I agree.
Ask every single question. It, it's crazy as you might think the question is, just make sure you ask it, to, to get the answer and write it down, you know, so, you know, you can rewind it later on if there was something to it. Yeah, so hopefully the, uh, the process, when we get face to face with people, we can, uh, you know.
I'm sure you guys will do a great job.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any more questions for Chris? All right, we did the Road Foreman's report, but did anybody have any questions for Chuck? All right. Um, I would like to go into an executive session.
At this time, Madam Chair, I will make those motions under Vermont Statute 313 annotated, Section A1A. Two executive sessions will be, uh, requested, Madam Chair. The first, and for the public's full knowledge, uh, will require contract negotiation or contract discussion, or matters that would include contract, and I'm simply reading off of the VLCT template, uh, and we are not in any way to make, find, uh, to put anyone in premature general knowledge or promote premature general knowledge at a place, not only the public law, but a person involved in a substantial disadvantage. This is not to be inferred anything other than that, other than privacy. Uh, and we would like to invite, um, all the current present members of the Highway Department, Charles Lawrence and, um, the town manager, interim manager, for the first meeting. For the second meeting, also, I move for a second, um, uh, executive session, Madam Chair, under 1VSA 313A2-810, also on a contractual matter. Um, and this is to invite just the interim, um, uh, town manager. And on both of these, the public should know, no action is intended to be taken without exception this evening. I so move both.
Second.
I would like to make an adjustment to that.
Sure.
To include the entire highway department.
I think I said that.
Oh, I thought, sorry, he said, he says, okay.
Include the entire highway department and, and Ally and interim town manager.
Motion to have, all right, motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was it Jason or Dan? I'm sorry.
It was Jason. Thank you.
Boards committee is in commission. Seeing none, other business?
I'm sorry.
I had a discussion with the, some members of the historical section. And they were going to do some research. Uh, I thought they might show up, uh, but they were doing some research about, um, uh, raising money, um, to assist with the renovation of the Hearst House, the little shed in the Westminster West Cemetery, um, which is in need of support. Um, uh, anyway, so they, there is a, there's two hearses, one, this one here, and another one that is Amber Friendies Garage now, was at the Haas's. It was actually made, uh, in Westminster West, um, and that, they were hoping to find a four permanent housing board. So the Hearst House came up as discussion, and the fact that it needs, needs, uh, work in order to remain public.
Okay.
Okay, that's just a note from that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other business? Seeing none, the date of the next meeting is Wednesday, April 12th, 2023.